Okay, well, good evening councillors and good evening people in the background. Welcome to this OAS meeting. Apologies for the delay. I know we've got John's apology. Yeah, oh, Mr Phil, okay. Well, the minutes have been on the table for last hour. People can't be that sign them later as a true record of last... Oh, you have a question?
Uh, no, I was going to say, um, page eleven. The last paragraph, councillor, it suggested that the price has been encouraged. It should be in time and carried.
Fair comment? Shall we take that to that, please, Amy? Anybody else got any comment? If not, can I sign them later as a true record?
Agreed.
Great, okay, thank you. Apologies for absence, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. Apologies from councillor Williamson, councillor Pinter-Martin and councillor Hyper.
We seem to have talked...
We've got councillor Hyman, too.
A substitute of councillor Hyman. Declarations of interest.
Number four, Mr Chairman.
Anybody who calls a declaration of interest, declare? No? Okay, number two, declare. Questions of members of the public?
Yes, members of the chamber.
Okay, we'll move on. Very substantial agenda. Just one thing, I intend with your agreement, councillors, to move item nine, eight, item nine, Budget Strategy Working Group proposal, and discuss it following the Strategic Review Update after six. I think it makes some sort of sense, because many of the comments, I think, that are likely to come out of the Strategic Review Update would impact on the budget strategy, so we might as well take them, you know, one after the other, so save ourselves going over the same ground all over again. So you happy with that, members, that we do that? Definitely hush.
Sorry, Chairman, are you moving nine before six?
I'm moving nine before seven, so it will follow on immediately after our discussion of six, Strategic Review Update. Okay, in that case, we'll move on to the first item for us to discuss, which is Universal Credit. So Peter, would you like to introduce what's your thoughts, please?
Certainly, Chairman. So it's, um, this is something that's really topical at the moment, so it's been in press in the last few weeks. Um, I was asked to bring an update, so here's the report. Stuart Mendes wrote this. Effectively, Waverley will be live on for Universal Credit for all new claimants by, across the whole band of working age people by July eighteen on the DWP's timetable. Um, I've done a, I've tried to cover all the different implications to the council within the one document and just explain without getting into huge amount of detail about how Universal Credit works for us. So it's open to questions, Chairman.
Okay. So Andrew, you...
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I wasn't expecting you. Right, one thing, two things, two things that are striking is most interesting, one is the advance payment suggestion, we're able to pay landlords direct. Because as we see in the public, the national press, um, this six-week payment, a waiting period, is causing a lot of anguish. If the beneficiaries could receive payment in advance, why is the national press apparently ignoring this? Is this generally available to receive a payment in advance?
Peter, you have a comment?
Certainly, Chairman. The payment in advance is actually a fifty percent payment, a applicant can request at the time of making a claim. And it's available for them to do that. As to why the press is picking up on that as an issue, I do not know, because it is published, and claimants do take up on the fifty percent advance on what their entitlement is likely to be at the point of putting the claim. So I can't really say why in the press they're choosing to...
I appreciate you can't comment, sorry, Mr Chairman, can I come back? I appreciate you can't comment on what the national press or even government policy is, but it does seem as though it's something we could very well publicise within wave of, although we didn't have that ability. And I don't, as someone who's representing a number of council tenants, I would be devastated to think that any of those tenants couldn't get the advance payment through ignorance.
It's definitely something, sorry, Chairman, it's definitely something our own staff can, we have twenty claimants at the moment on Universal Credit, so there's no reason for why our staff couldn't provide any assistance at all that we could possibly.
Right, okay, can I suggest that what we ought to be focusing on is how this affects potential claimants in wave? And the press is all very well, but I mean, I think, let's focus, if we can, on how it might affect in the wave. And as I understand it at the moment from this report, we're talking about, the only people going on to it are people making new claims. So, and that, as I read this, it takes us some time to process those claims anyway historically in the past. So is there any real significant difference between what is happening in this six-week period and what it's been taking us historically anyway for a new claimant?
Well, Chairman, there are six different benefits that can roll into one, and we only currently administer one, which is housing benefit. DWP and HMRC administer the others. And so what I don't know, and I don't know if you do, Peter, is the sort of processing times for the other five at the moment. But certainly housing benefit, if a new claimant comes into our reception, they have all the information that they need in terms of evidencing, et cetera. We turn that claim out very quickly. Quite often the delay is asking for pay slips and evidence and identity documents, et cetera.
Which is the same delay you get on Universal Credit. They won't actually pay Universal Credit until it's fully documented on the entitlement notice. So in terms of housing benefit on Universal Credit, entitlement's exactly the same in terms of the documentation required. The government are trying to do that through electronic means on Universal Credit, so they're trying to channel people through their website as their main point of contact, set up an account, and they provide the documents electronically. The idea is they can come here and have these things scanned and necessary and sent on. So we're in a neighbour, as an authority for the Universal Claimant, for claimants to come along. So the process is the same, in terms of documentation. So the delay really is about people getting the right documents at the right time.
Yes, is it the case, so, thank you, Mr Chairman, that because you're applying effectively for one benefit which replaces six, you might have to have six different pieces of paper or six different proofs, whereas before we've only asked for one, because we're just providing housing benefit. I'm really concerned about what's going to happen, we've got more than twenty.
Can I just ask, Andrew, let's have a wider discussion. I will let you come back if you think of some of the item issues that you'd like to raise, but Stephen?
Chairman, very clear report, I didn't know a little bit about it from what I've read, but this was very, very helpful. On page fourteen of our pack, one, two, three, four, five paragraphs down, paragraph beginning claims that might experience hardship can ask for advance payment. This is phrase, current claimants can also ask for advance payment if they got a sanction. What is that supposed to mean?
Claimants can get a sanction for various reasons in terms of...
So what is a sanction?
A sanction is withholding of their benefit. So if that's happened, they can ask for an advance.
Can you speak a little bit? Sorry, I'm slightly deaf anyway, so can I...
And I'm quiet.
It's all my claimant on me. I've never did that, Chairman.
So a sanction is where a claimant, for some reason, hasn't complied with the rules, they get a sanction. It tends to apply more to job seekers allowed and the income support areas. But if they have a sanction and they have hardship, they can apply for advance from their ongoing job seeker allowance.
On the top of page fifteen, in reference to encourage greater digital inclusion, I imagine means accessing things online preferably. What is financial inclusion?
Um...
The government's attention is to encourage greater digital inclusion, along with financial inclusion, personal responsibility. I can gather what digital inclusion and personal responsibility are, I'm not very clear about financial inclusion.
It's about people taking responsibility for their own finances, is what the government's really aiming at. So managing their own money.
So financial inclusion, personal responsibility is actually one concept?
Effectively. I was using the DWP terminology rather than interpreting it.
The trouble with finding letters tonight, meaning it's quite hard to get...
Are you got more? Kick out then.
Yes, um, when it, and just to be clear, the new claims, they are being processed for the feet of all SITs benefits if they qualify as an inclusion, housing benefit. Because we only currently provide housing benefit, the existing case, lady is saying, is not. I imagine at some stage they will be involved as well, but we don't know when.
From our point of view, it's just entirely, oh, the claimants, sorry.
Look, if someone is on housing benefit, has been paid for, paid by us, do you have any idea, and if they're in receipt of that, well, when they will be translated on to Universal Credit?
So in July next year, all working age people, new claimants, will go to Universal Credit. The existing ones, we haven't got a date for that, it's at some point in the future.
Chairman, on the same point, can I just say, I mean, the claimants were supposed to have gone across to Universal Credit about five years ago, and, yeah, we were talking to members five or six years ago about Universal Credit was imminent, and it's just been delayed and delayed and delayed. And so, and at the moment, as Peter said, yeah, there's a sort of trickle coming through in this and most other areas. And this is only working age claims at the moment. The government actually haven't decided what to do about pension age claims, which is about half of the claimants in the Waverley area. So the, of course, we don't, we're not going to be administering Universal Credit, that's done elsewhere, but we care very much about our customers who are going to move across on to this. There will be some transition support, that I'm guessing members are, you know, very keen that we provide properly, as are we. And so, you know, originally we're expecting big tranches of housing benefit claims to go across to Universal Credit, but some time again it just hasn't happened. And so this trickle, somehow twenty's got to turn into two thousand nine hundred and thirty-three, and then, and then the other two thousand or so, the claimants who are pension age, will follow at some point, I guess.
And am I right that when people get on to UC, we stop as a council being responsible for making payments?
That's correct, yes.
In fact, we are looking in terms of cost savings, eventually, when all this happens, you get to have fewer people dealing with the payment, the benefits indeed.
We got paid for doing it for the past, so, I mean, it's a switch, we got paid for doing it before.
Yes.
So, again, our numbers will shrink.
Right, we won't make any difference.
I'm not sure how much they will save.
There's, 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 councillor Van T, there's the, the DWP pays an admin grant to administer housing benefit on their behalf, whereas we're a delivery agent, if you like. And so they've started whittling away on the admin grant, but because Universal Credit has been very slow to come about, we haven't seen any big slices off of our grant yet. But what Peter's just done is managed a review of the housing benefit team to put us in a position where we can react very quickly when that starts to happen, so it doesn't have a big impact on our budget, so we're not left with the costs without the grant in another sense.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last paragraph on page fifteen. I'm slightly concerned that, at the moment, the council's tenants' rent is deducted straight from their benefits into our country, and in future they will pay their own rent. This is, could well cause rent arrears, as people spend their rent money in the pub. So I'm just slightly concerned that this is a serious risk to the council. Is there any way we can avoid this and perhaps get them to pay their rent directly?
Sir Chairman, the DWP, we see that there's a section, cut to which page number is here, they, DWP have developed the Trusted Partner Portal, which is still under development with them. So they want to work with local authorities and housing associations, so that where tenants are identified as having problems paying their rate, we can get an arrangement where they just pay us directly. So that's something they're actually working on at the moment. So it's one mitigation towards that. There are other things that we can do as well internally, through the housing team, to identify where tenants are having such problems and engage in them very early on in the Universal Credit system, to make sure that we do have to help them.
Okay, Gerry?
Thanks, well, exactly as Nick has just said, or councillor Holders just said, I'm major concern with what happens when people get into debt, and it's possibly because, rather than being in the public, they've got payday loans or whatever, that are likely to be less forgiving on their kneecaps than the council might be, or, I mean, that's a hand, or whatever. But, you know, people have different priorities, and feeding the kids usually comes before paying the council, I would assume, in most cases. I think there is a common perception that there is likely to be a big problem, and I suppose what our residents and, you know, what everybody in Waverley wants to know is what's the council's plan for that? I mean, do we just boot people up? I see at the moment that more than half of people who claim housing benefit are in the private sector. That, I think, did Peter say that that is largely retired people who are claiming housing benefit, or, I guess a shake of the head?
That's about even. For Waverley, it's about even.
But all we need to worry about ourselves as a council is the rent payments that we receive direct at the moment, but won't necessarily receive directly, but people will be able to get it paid directly, is that if we as a council ask that it's paid directly because they're not paying it? I mean, I'm concerned they're already in trouble by this stage, they're already in debt, and so, you know, problems are mounting up.
So, it's a wider question, I think. I mean, I think one of the things that we're all interested is, you mentioned, Graham, you know, we're here to support our customers, our residents. I mean, what are you envisaging doing in terms of supporting our residents? What, I mean, you say in this report, you know, on the bottom of page seventeen and top of page eighteen, adequate resources to assist those residents claiming Universal Credit available. What is actually pointing to do, because I think this is the area we want to, you know, we want to understand, because it's through that, I would hope, we can address the question that Gerry's asked, even on a wider basis, not just our own tenant, tenants of our properties, but what's happening on a wider basis. So I think, you know, from my perspective, we've got a wider responsibility than just dealing with our own housing association.
Chairman, can I add to that, for Graham to add also, because the other side of the, the other issue here is whether private landlords are going to stop taking claimants, people who already at the moment get, and that could be a massive problem for everybody who provides, you know, has multiple occupation and all the rest in the borough at the moment. Where are we going with that?
Let's see what our officers can decide.
So, Chairman, I may just start there, and you're absolutely right, councillor Hamer, we were as concerned about those housing benefit claimants that are in private sector rented accommodation as well, because we care about them, because they are residents, but also because, of course, we have a statutory responsibility to house homeless families. And what is starting to happen in the country is that private landlords are either stopping to, stopping taking people on, and I was talking to some colleagues in Money Need and Spelthorn last week, and they're experiencing sort of preemptive terminations of tenancies already. And, and so, so what we did a few years ago, and councillor Van T, you remember this, we set up a post called Don't Lose Your Home Post, it was partly because of the recessionary pressure, but also partly because of the Universal Credit was imminent, and that office is still in post, and supporting, supporting families who get into difficulty in our own tenants and in private sector accommodation. Our housing rents team are fully aware of this, and they're gearing up to support our tenants. And also, the review that Peter's done gives the housing benefit team more sort of empowerment to support claimants who move across on to Universal Credit. Because whilst the government will be taking our admin grants away, you know, we do have the ability to retain some of our staff, even if our client base reduces, to support them through that transition. Now, that might well come at a cost to our council taxpayers, but it might be something that Waverley wants to support, albeit on a temporary basis, so that we don't just chop the resource as soon as the, as soon as the customer base moves across to Universal Credit. We could taper that down, but there might be a cost because the government take the grants away. But, you know, we'll put it forward when this time happens, when these big steps happen. We'll put it forward as an option for members to consider.
Well, you know, it's what we don't want to happen. I thought we might like to see, you know, as an OES committee, you know, what your proposals might look like even now, so, you know, I think, in terms of spreading good news, if we, if this is something that, you know, can be taken through the executive and necessarily on to council, we would actually want to broadcast that there won't be a gap, there will be help out there. And we actually want to, you know, make clear to people, you know, that we will be looking to provide help. And I think it would be useful to have that, your ideas as officers out, you know, on the table now for us to discuss whether we think that's appropriate, whether we recommend to the executive that they should be considering funding that. I don't know what others say.
Are you, are you proposing setting up our own helpline for people to ring to Waverley if they're getting into problems?
Well, we already have an office of our own helpline, but we already have it, you know, had, as Graham said, an officer there to advise.
I mean, a telephone, a dedicated telephone.
Well, I mean, I was trying to tease out of the officers what they were envisaging, you know. No, no, I was, I was, I was trying to persuade them, make a proposal.
So, Chairman, it's a really good question, and the reason why I'd suggest we don't do a helpline is because we're not part of the mechanics of Universal Credit. But what I'd suggest that we can do, it comes back to the question around, you know, digital inclusion, the financial inclusion, the government are proposing through this to leave a lot of, a lot of housing, or Universal Credit claimants sort of on their own and rely on phone and internet. And we know, because we like to deal with our housing benefit customers over the counter, that most of our, lots of our customers also like to be seen by a human being over a counter. And of course, what we can't forget also is that Waverley is a big partner of the citizens' advice, and so that's another partner organisation that can support our residents in the transition from housing benefit to Universal Credit. So we're working with them, and Nikki Harvey, who's our benefits manager, meets regularly with them to review what the position is. But, you know, with twenty claimants at the moment, we haven't got the sort of mass there, but we are doing what we can at the moment. But I completely take the point about the proposals.
Chairman, we also have an agreement with DWP to, which is on page fifteen, you can see about halfway down.
Yeah.
We have an agreement with DWP to provide digital skills and budgeting support to any, any Universal Credit claimant that comes along asking for help. So we've already built in some capacity to cover that.
Well, that's encouraging. I think what we're, what, to my mind, what we're inviting you to do is to spell out a little bit more detail what you have in mind, what you're proposing, because I think that would be helpful, if we, if we can actually get, A, get the executive engaged in this, and recognising those real concern out in the community as to what is going to happen. And if we can see what sort of help will be available, we can, we can perhaps make some, either encourage you to do more or agree, it's actually, sorry, it's actually in the bill, you wanted a comment.
About the private landlords, why are they going down, they're not taking people with housing benefit?
So at the moment, a lot of housing benefits paid weekly, and so the housing benefit is paid by us to a housing benefit claimant, and then by the claimant on to the private landlord. And what some private landlords are now seeing is a risk, because if that housing benefit claimant now moves on to Universal Credit and gets one lump sum for those sort of five or six, or however many they're eligible for, streams of benefit once a month, there's a risk that, as has been mentioned, that the rent will become harder to prioritise, particularly if that family hadn't had to have that financial discipline before. And so that's where private landlords are seeing a risk, you know, as are we as a social landlord.
Some councils have done that, towards, in London, that what they've done is they're directly paying, if you're on housing benefit, directly pay to the landlord, because people think that they could save some money out of the housing benefit and keep themselves. The other thing is, I've got a few statements as friends, is that because of the recession and everything, and the mortgages going higher, they can't hold, because the first time when it starts paying, it takes three months for the process to go on, and the landlords can't pay the difference. And those are the things. And these are the reasons. Is that, could be done, that if we are paying, instead of tenants, be paid directly as a, as a council policy, that pays to the landlord, and get the tenant out in the middle of?
Well, we would love to be able to do that in every case, but the regulations around housing benefit currently only allow us to directly pay housing benefit to registered social landlords and to private landlords under certain circumstances. So for example, if there's been arrears for a number of weeks and the landlord appeals to us, and also if there's a condition of the claimant themselves whereby, yeah, a medical condition that is, whereby they, they wouldn't be able to keep up their rent payment, then the, the claimant, so the tenant and the landlord could apply to have it paid directly. But we're not allowed to do a blanket transfer of housing benefit or Universal Credit straight to landlords.
So how has it been done, especially in Redbridge and in Scotland and Harangue as well?
I don't know, so in the pilot area, and whether they were piloting the direct payment. Is this Universal Credit or housing benefit?
Housing benefit.
Housing benefit, yeah, okay. So they could pay registered social landlords to housing associations or councils with housing stock, but they wouldn't be able to pay all of their housing benefit to private tenants directly.
Okay, great, just to make, you know, the help and assistance we're going to give, might also apply with what we wanted to provide advisory services to private landlords as to how they can secure their position, it would be part of the advice we should be potentially offering. No, you want to come back?
I'm not wanting to come back. We've already identified that we're going to have to provide help and service to our constituents for this. I see on point number six on page seventeen, that insufficient funding, it will be provided from DWP for us to provide that service. I'm just wondering if we have taken measures in our budget for next year to hire additional people to look after all the claims that are coming in, and how much always is it going to cost?
Peter, is there anything in your view, and to quickly sit on real line results?
Yeah, sure. So, Chairman, we've been doing a review in the benefit service of how we actually deliver that service, so you can call it systems thinking, and it's a review that looks from the customer's perspective on how, how we actually administer the benefit. So from the minute they put a claim in or contact us to make a claim, we inform them, the process will be, we will inform them what they need to bring in, they come to see us, and if they have all the documents ready at the time, they'll get the benefit sorted out on that day. A significant difference to the way housing benefits are administered at the moment, but that also means that we've been able to restructure the team that administers housing benefit, because it's the person doing the face to face that's making the decisions. There's no bureaucracy at all in terms of passing anything back or passing anything on for a decision being made elsewhere, which means that from a, from a service perspective, from our perspective, we can flex that team as time goes on, depending on demand. So as Universal Credit comes in, if we find we don't necessarily need the numbers in the team anymore, we can very easily allow the numbers to reduce over time through just natural staff turnover, over a horizon of two or three years. And also, it's very easy to scale up as well, if we felt there was a need to increase them, you know, because it's very easy in the new model to put somebody to work alongside the existing person in that process to learn quite rapidly to scale up.
Okay, but it took the main, next phrase, a fair point. I think in terms of budget preparation for next year, and talking about things going live increasingly throughout the next financial year, it would seem appropriate to make some sort of provision, you know, for this.
But we have, in our financial model, we've added fifty thousand each year over the three years.
Again, I think, set out some of the information to us, as addition to this report, I think it would be extremely helpful. Gerry, did you want to come back?
Yes, quickly on those points, and picking up on the limitations, we're, I understand that people are only going to be able to do this online.
Yes, it's entirely.
We're going to be forcing it, and we are going to have to make sure it's us, not the government or the deliverers of universal credit that are going to be helping people to do that part, because I'm thinking of people with, you know, will we have the systems in place, will we have the current carers that people have for those with learning difficulties who can't handle the online stuff? Will we or someone else be doing it for them? Will we have the support for Citizens Advice Bureau and other organisations, which I think is what Nick was getting at there? And mental health, where there are problems there, where people, yeah, they've got a mental health condition, they simply won't do it even though they probably can do other things on their computer, what they won't do is fill in a form. Or other incapability, reasons for incapability in terms of IT skills. So, you know, do we know that we're going to have the funding available for that? Because that's what this bullet point six really is getting at. And if not, can we please have that as part of the plan, which Mike and other councillor Ben, Chairman, is talking about? Another issue, I want to understand, actually, I think we should understand how big this problem's going to be, because I know as far as housing benefit is concerned, a lot of people don't have full housing benefit. So it's only people who have a full housing benefit, who receive full housing benefit for all of their rent payments, either private or council housing, that are most likely to go into debt if they, you know, don't keep making their payments themselves fully. How many people don't? How many people are on only small amount of housing benefit that's in our numbers?
Twenty percent of our claimants are on partial benefit.
Nice, okay. I think we need to see if they'll come back to us as to what they're proposing, and then to see, do the test as to whether we think it is adequate. I don't think we're going to resolve it fully round this table this evening. I think what we're trying to do is invite you to come back with detailing what you are proposing to do, and, you know, what sort of budget figures you are actually intending to provide in next year's budget, and bring it back to our next meeting, and we can comment on whether we think, you know, it's adequate or otherwise. But I think it's encouraging to feel you are actually planning this way. And I think it sounds to me like, you know, one of these, Jim calls, could be one of these good news stories, which we should be putting out, reassuring people that there will be help and support in through this change. And as a council, we may have to recognise that we're going to have to be funding some of this without recompense from somewhere else, but we would want to do that. Anybody else want to comment before we close on this particular item? Do you want to come back, Andrew, at all?
Well, if I may, thank you, Chairman. One question was, for once, Mr Jerry, councillor Heimler and I seem to be in some agreement.
We always are.
Careful. For once, yeah. I think it was just the second last paragraph on page fourteen, that it states the landlord can also make this request. Does that apply to Waverley? So could we request that any rent arrears or were paid direct? Can we override whatever the claimant might wish?
No. It can't override claims. Well, and under universal credit, so there won't be an itemised, so when the number of however many within that group of six benefit streams come together, they're not itemised, so the universal credit claimant won't see a bit for benefit sector, but they will get a rent bill from us that they will need to pay. And so if they were on partial benefit before, it's sort of irrelevant then, because they have to pay their full rent from their own entire resources. And this is what the DWP call the financial, what was it?
Responsibility.
Yes. Because they're saying that they want to transfer that responsibility, because, you know, they don't see why anyone shouldn't be able to manage their budgets over a month. And that's pretty much the language they've been using along the way of universal credit.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman.
That is probably the most bold of all the assumptions underlying this, because those who work with Citizens Advice know how incompetent people can be with money. And the one bit I fear could fall over badly.
Well, yeah, I think that's why we are going to be obliged to actually provide help, because by then it's a good service, but it's actually in our own interest to...
It's worse than that, Chairman. I think even if we provide help, it's people's ability or even wish to manage their finances in a way which proven people do.
Sure, but at least we can start it off in the right direction and be there available for help.
I think that transition period, Chairman, is absolutely right.
That is something we are going to have to face up to if we're going to let this go as smoothly as possible within the borough.
So can we just get an answer, if we know it, on this question? If a tenant gets into rent arrears, is Waverley as a landlord able, under the rules, to ask for a portion of the use seat to be paid directly to them?
Probably, yes. Yeah, I mean, one is so probably, all the rules haven't been finalised yet actually, because it's still being piloted as well, some of the specifics around universal credit. But it is the case at the moment with private landlords that they can apply if there's rent arrears, as I said earlier. But we don't need to do that because it's passported straight in to a registered landlord. But under universal credit, we can't do a blanket passporting straight from universal credit into our rent accounts. It's only in those specific cases, which I think the DWP is looking to continue, which is rent arrears and some sort of medical condition that prevents a claimant from making payments themselves, would be the only justification or the basis of a claim from any kind of landlord to have the rent coming straight through to them.
Right. I think we've probably spent, it's important, I think we've probably spent enough time at the moment. Members, there's a recommendation which we're asked to look at, that I think we're happy with the recommendation as it stands, but adding to it, I think the request to come back with some more details is that what we are proposing to do, we're asked to review at the next meeting, and I think this is a topic which is going to stay on our agenda, and we're going to want to monitor it closely, you know, and understand we may have to respond in different ways as circumstances turn up. But I think it's something we'll want to see on our agenda continuously throughout becoming...
A second, I think. And as Jerry was, I agree with Jerry as well, especially needs, what are we going to do to fill up their forms and stuff?
I think it's all part of it. I mean, let's see what they're proposing, and we may want to look at what they're proposing and add to it or remove things from it once we see their proposal.
I don't have a form of words, too, because I think this recommendation is okay, but it's not full.
Well, that's right. I said we need to add to it, the issue, that there's now a whole load of actions requesting officers to come back with details of their proposals for us to review and comment on in future at the next meeting. Are you happy with that, members?
Agreed.
Okay. Let's move then on to the next topic, which is the strategic review of Waverley Borough Council update report. Louise, do you want to take us through while we're here?
At the last meeting, members asked us for an update on the strategic view and what's been happening, so the reports that we're front of you. Members will recall that last November, Crasus consultants were giving the work to identify and articulate the strategic opportunities which the council may wish to pursue, and to analyse the challenges and issues for the council in achieving these opportunities, including, and these are important, organisational partnerships, resources, skills and culture. So that's what they looked at. Now, many of you may have been involved in the review, I'm not sure how many of the that bench and scrutiny members were included, but hopefully some of you were. The consultant's report is then full at annex one and have summarised the findings below. And the findings were divided into two main areas, the strategic vision side things and how the council works. And each section were their findings and then their recommendations as to sort of way forward, and I'm sure members will have a lot to say about that, so I'm not going to be able to do that in detail. At annex two, you find that as a result of the work that the consultants did, there was an action plan that's been produced, quite a big, long action plan in age three, and you'll see from the copy that you've got that in green are the things that have been done, have been completed. Quite a lot of progress has been made, we feel. I think we feel probably that it was an ambitious programme to complete it all of it in a timescale that was initially required. So some things haven't been completed, some things are well on their way, some things absolutely have been completed. I think you'll, members will know that the scheme of delegation, for example, on the constitution has been changed as a result of this work. And you'll also obviously be aware that Tom Horward has been appointed as an interim managing director to keep the momentum going on this action plan. So I don't think I'll say any more in detail, let members discuss, you know, what questions you want to hear.
What I suggest we do is we first comment on the report and then go through the action plan itself. So we take comments in two parts. Stephen?
Thank you. I found myself to my surprise reacting quite strongly to its strategic vision report, in that when I read that and I went on to read the Crasus report, I was not impressed by the clarity of the report. I found the management's view is very confusing. My concern I have is that if I find it confusing, I wonder what the officers and others who are having to work to it think. And I appreciate you brought in wording, but when I see in page twenty, the findings that fall, the council's good financial standing has been proved to be managed, that's fine. However, the expert analysis and medium term financial strategy also highlighted the need for a more expansive efficiency programme focusing on generating income. I've never seen efficiency programmes combined with generating income before, and I simply do not understand what it's getting at, and can you please translate for me? And I can see where it's come from in the report. So, Grace, could you...
Well, Chairman, I think the point is it has come straight from the report.
What do you understand by it?
So what they said in the report, and when they presented the report back in January, February this year, was actually, they're two separate issues, as you rightly say. So expansive efficiency programme, what they're saying is that we've got, that we have some good examples of efficiencies being drawn out, but we didn't have, I think they used the term cross cutting in part of their analysis, and they also said we needed to generate more income. And then they bolted the two statements on together. I completely get the point, Chairman, the councillor and I'm just making about, you know, if this is going to be understandable to staff, then we need to watch the terminology. But I think this is a lift out of the report. Is that right, Louise?
Yeah. I think, I mean, I've tried to read the Crasus report about four times, and so I'm being quite serious when I say that I didn't find it as helpful as I was hoping. I suppose one big question I've got is how much in it has actually either given new ideas or prompted new ideas by the council? Because if you go on to the action plan, a lot of this dealing with the other side, how the council works, where in a sense it's probably easier to see how things could be changed. When I look at the money side, which in a sense is probably what this committee is particularly interested in, I am simply unable to see what new ideas they've come up with. I mean, given we're getting less money, we either have to cut costs or increase income or both. And their reference to promoting the economy, I mean, what do they think that a district council, borough council can actually do? How do we support local businesses beyond perhaps cutting business rents if we're allowed to? And it seemed to me that it was full of, if you like, stuff that fills out a management consultant's report, but I didn't see what we as a council could take out of it. And that worries me as a member of this committee, because, I mean, all I end up seeing is that we just end up lonely, which is not a constructive attitude, and worrying that the council will not actually move forward in terms of solving its financial problems based on this work. So I'm really looking for some reassurance, if you wish, that you as the senior financial people working for the council can see some genuine clarity in this or genuine ideas which will lead to some difference in the way that we do things. Otherwise, when we go on to the item that Chairman's brought forward, my big question is of all those listed of actions, are any of them genuinely new? I'm sure I've seen each and every one before. So what has this exercise actually done to create new thinking?
Okay. I'm not sure I'm the right person to talk to.
I'm sure you won't.
Because on the whole, the results of the analysis of the finances was pretty strong. And I think councillor Mullins got a really good point, which is, I think, it probably gave some pointers in certain directions. I mean, the Crasus people were essentially from the London Borough, both the lady who led it and the financial support, their one five one officer they bought here from London Borough. And so some of the sort of scale and ideas came, you know, obviously came from London Borough, not a sort of a two stroke, three tier local government in a rural area. That's not to say that they weren't good ideas, but they perhaps weren't new things for us. And actually, in July this year, I took a report to executive and council on review of our financial strategy, which directly drew the learning from the Crasus review. And it wasn't learning as such, it was observations that largely aligned to what the council was already, you know, I'm taking credit myself, but the council had already put us on a really good path a number of years ago, and we're continuing that path. And so I think they were struggling to inject new ideas into it, and they made lots of positive statements about what we were doing as a council in terms of our financial affairs. But they weren't saying it's perfect, they were, some of it was saying we need to make those linkages to other strategies, and that's a really good point that we've taken aboard, and that we need to perhaps connect some of the individual efforts of our service heads to think more strategically towards the problem. But other than that, no, nothing that we, on the financial side, was likely, we didn't think of that at all.
Can I ask one final comment? Your point about linkages, what I did think was a useful idea, it's very easy for three separate documents to have families working together when they should. And the other comment I saw was, which is always valuable if you can get it, are there other councils in similar positions who've gone down the same path as we are intending to a little bit beforehand? Do we have documentary examples of what they've done? Do we have any new ideas from them, or has that also been rather optimistic?
No, we do, actually, thank you for that, because that's one thing that we have done as a result of this, is, you know, look beyond Surrey, and, you know, East Hamps is a good example, and haven't we worked with them? I've been down to work with Chichester to find out what they're doing on various things, including asset investment. And so I think it probably provided a catalyst for a number of different thought processes, and certainly looking beyond the Surrey authorities. And in that respect, you know, it had some value, because we've got some really good ideas that perhaps we wouldn't have shared in our normal sort of professional networking circles around the Surrey authorities. So some good stuff's come from that, particularly we know with a hook up with Tom and East Hamps. So, yeah, whilst it's not as tangible as, you know, actually coming up with a new idea and turning that into a revenue stream, it's got some thought processes going, and also some shared work already that we're doing with East Hamps in a couple of areas.
Louise, did you want to comment as well?
Just one area in particular, which councillor Mullins said to his heart, economic development was an area, and again, as Graham says, the consultants came from a London Borough background, so they were very hot on making sure our town centres were vibrant, prosperous and all that, which, you know, we would hope that they would be. And I think they recognise that there will be a challenge, I think, there in terms of conserving the area how we want to see it, to give the opportunities where we can to businesses, but keep that sort of Waverley feel about the place. And I think they recognise that some of the things they were suggesting in terms of economic development might actually get a challenge from members themselves.
Jerry, did he want to comment?
Yes, please, absolutely. Actually, I'd like to pick up a little bit more on, which I thoroughly enjoyed, what councillor Hollander was saying there, actually. I agree entirely that we shouldn't underestimate the power of residents out there to be very sceptical about this sort of thing. It's getting a bunch of consultants to tell us what we want them to tell us. You know, they could look at this afterwards and say, well, it's pretty damn obvious to anybody that what we wanted was something that told us that we had to delegate everything, all decisions over to the officers, and something which tells us that we've got to get rid of a particular member of staff and, you know, do something a different way in that respect. And you would take from this, and as councillor Mullins said, everything that we've got in there, really, the scheme of delegation has been done, well, that was done real fast and I wouldn't believe it was necessarily sparked by this. And certainly, you know, yes, we've changed the scrutiny committees considerably in the way that scrutiny committees work, well, that was improvised. way that scrutiny committees work, well, that was in progress a long, long time obviously before. So there are things in here which actually, as Councilor Holden said, are things we would have done already, where I'm really disappointed myself, because it's something I always bang on about, and that's having the goal, knowing exactly where you're headed. And the first thing should have been done, that this did point out, and a lot of us, a lot of councillors have been saying for some years now, is that we've got to have the goals first of all. We've got to have definite achievable goals, measurable goals, and that has to come before everything else. So where we're talking about having particularly the strategic vision, and as Louis was saying, talking about what we're going to do with our town centres, that actually has to come before a local plan. You don't do a local plan and then decide afterwards. I know, we did actually have a useful paper put around by Alex, a scrutiny officer, and it came to my committee, but I don't know whether it came to this committee, members of this committee as well, on things that can come forward out of the strategic review. If you've seen what he said for us, I think it would be a very good idea to, you know, perhaps have this come back again another time and take on board what Alex was saying, because obviously give me some good thoughts. But, I mean, you know, as far as I'm concerned, this says there's got to be a change of culture, and I certainly don't see anything in that respect.
Okay. Any other comments?
And we want to see a real action plan.
Okay. Anybody else want to comment?
Thank you, Chairman. I tend to agree with both the previous speakers, that I think this is an awful lot of gobbledygook. On page 31, for instance, the Clavens report, paragraph 21, says, whilst the council does have the capacity to deliver on ambitious goals, a review found a number of aspects in the way the council works that would need to change if the council is to have control, et cetera, et cetera. What I'd like to see is what recommendations they make that the council should need to do to change to make us more efficient. And there doesn't appear to be any bullet points here as to exactly what we should do. It's all gobbledygook. I'd like to see it abbreviated and to make it more specific.
Okay. Do you want to comment?
Yeah, Chairman, I mean, just really to remind members that this, I mean, this is a piece of work that was done almost a year ago. It was agreed by council in February, and the action plan was agreed by council in February. So we're bringing it forward tonight at the request of the Chairman, so that members can see the progress against the agreed action plan. We can't go back now and get the report changed. It is a piece of work. I mean, so all comments, perfectly valid now, but we've, the council has adopted this as the action plan back in February, as the, noted the review and adopted the action plan that's in the annex here. So I think where we'll get most value of the officer team moving this forward is if we try and take all the members' comments and, you know, reflect that in where the progress is going on the action plan that was agreed.
I think that's fair, Graham. I mean, I think, you know, it's your report to the executive in July which triggered this all off, so I wouldn't say you pulled it on your own head. But I think it's a legitimate interest in this committee. And I'd say, I share members' concerns about the lack of apparent changes in strategic direction which were in this plan. I mean, I know extensively went to ONS in a previous incarnation, and this action plan, as you write, did go through council, although I can't personally remember him, but it actually happened without making a comment. But when we are, as you say, rightly saying, we are where we are, it seems to me there's some good stuff on the organisational side and the changes that have been made to actually streamline how the council actually works internally. But I think, as we're saying, we believe, I think most members believe, major strategic changes are going to be necessary if we're going to resolve the long term financial situation, both in terms of what services we actually deliver and how we actually deliver them. Until we actually see that, and to be fair, you know, you're right, Tom Hallwood has actually suggested that that's the next stage he actually wants to take forward at the last coordination committee, that was very much on the table and very much the invitation of, once the executive and his senior colleagues had got together, they would welcome a ONS comment. But that is the bit that's missing from this. And I think, you know, yes, we shouldn't be looking at it from the eyes of twelve months ago, we should be looking at it where we are now. But clearly, I think the message from this committee is, we're expecting the executive and senior officers to come back with some real, very radical strategic vision, you know. The projections of the medium financial plan, the long term financial plan, clearly demonstrate we can't go on as we are. I mean, you know, things which you referred to in the detail and coming on to the actual budget strategy a bit, you know, we've talked about, you know, the Star Chamber process, that's been running for 10 years now. We've talked about the Foresight Programme, that's been running for about seven years. I mean, it's unrealistic to expect major cost savings to come out of those programmes. There'll be a contribution, but, you know, if those programmes running that sort of length of time, I think something radical needs to happen if we're going to make the progress which I think we all think we need to make. And I think that's what we're looking forward to seeing. Stuart?
Yes, thanks, Chairman. And I have to say, I hear a lot around the table here, when you start talking about hard facts from when you run a business, such as I run mine, and we're always looking for new ideas, obviously, but to turn my business around and say, oh, so we're suddenly going to go into IT, would be a complete and absolute disaster. And it frightens me to death to listen to you guys and everyone else talk about buying real estate and buying warehouses and such as that. We don't have the expertise, we don't know what we're doing on that, we don't know the abilities of it, the pit falls out if you've got seven estates, one falls over and you've got a huge bad debt, you're in a big hole, and all your funds disappear very rapidly. Now, I've sent several emails out for these people, haven't received one reply. I don't understand that. Whatever we do, and I've only got eighteen months left to run on the council anyway, but whatever you do has got to be safe and solid. We're dealing with public money, and we should be looking at things like council houses, building homes, buying land and owning the freehold. We should not be looking at taking on estates that are already built. Grandpa, I work in London, you know, and Grandpa Tower, nithing. Who's going to pick up the bill for that? How do we know these places we're looking at have not got nithing on the look of cash wire? How do we know? Who's going to pick up the bill? The whole scenario that you're talking about with now with me, it frightens me to death. You're standing on the edge of a cliff, and I think it needs seriously, seriously looking at.
Okay. Well, thanks for that comment, and I think it's injecting some realism into it. But, you know, we have a major financial hole.
I understand that.
And we have to find ways of resolving that. And I think what we're saying is we need a strategy to do that. Now, we need to challenge that strategy, absolutely, but I think without a strategy to look at, carrying on as we are won't work.
But we need to stay within the realms of where our expertise allows it. That's the point I'm making.
I think we agree with that too. But I think anybody who thinks investing in property is going to be the solution is for the birds, and I think we've really made that comment around this table at past meetings. It's a contribution, particularly if it can create some other benefit to the community, which is the point, well, but that's an added value. But anybody else want to comment? Louis?
Sorry, just to reiterate something that you said about the strategic direction and the opportunity that ONS members and actually all non-executive members will get an opportunity to come to a workshop on, I think it's 21st, Amy, do you?
I think you might be right.
You will be given an invite very shortly to a facilitated workshop to hear what some of the Tom Hallwood's ideas have been that he would present to the executive before that. You'll get a chance then.
Well, let's wait and see what happens. But I think we do need the executive and to come together with some clear proposals and to bring them back to the NS committee for us to comment on, and then we can see where that takes us. But I think from my perspective, and I think other members as well, the NS has to be on the executive and the senior officers to come up with a strategy and some ideas and to put them before the ONS, not the other way around. Now, to be fair, Tom's actually proposed to do that, so we look forward to it. Gerry, do you want to?
Actually, I think.
Well, you're not the whole committee, but I mean.
I share.
I see what the chairman's feeling generous in a minute. We're not giving this a laugh.
We have, yes, well, I was thinking Councilor Stenhouse comments probably need to be said on Monday, and we've also got the economic development bit on our evening plan on agenda for later on, I think, so we're probably talking about it again. But I was just wondering, all this yellow bit, which says March 2017, are they going to get done or are we?
I'm going to say, does anybody got any specific comments on the action plan itself before we leave this topic?
The intention, sorry, to answer that point, is to make sure that they're all done. Yes.
Because it's all those that should have been done in March, but, I mean, I'm not entirely sure we really want them all done. Some are coming forward to play shaping stuff, coming to make the environment overview scrutiny in full night time and that sort of stuff. So I know moves are being made, but really, it's having that, you've got to have that strategic vision first, and everything else falls out of it. So everything's upside down at the moment, and I don't think we're going to go a long way whilst we keep treating it the world the other way up from which it is.
Well, the whole array of details which we could challenge on here, but I mean, it's probably not as fruitful as it might be, but if anybody's got any specific comments on the action plan, it's probably worth taking up with Louise offline while they're going through them line by line this evening. I mean, I've got several I've scribbled on here which I'm happy to pass on to you, but if anybody's got any particular one they want to raise, then please do it now, and otherwise we'll move on and we'll look at the recommendations.
Could I maybe, I'm not really thinking about that, and what does occur to me is that, and this is a bit of an overall strategic point, we probably need three strategic options, one of which is when we can see some non-negotiable income coming in from some commercial stream. Another is when that is not going to make a contribution, therefore we're talking about cutting costs and where more partnership working, outsourcing, like more and more, sharing more and more of our admin costs is the way to save money and yet be able to maintain services both separately and discretionary. And third, I think we do, given the forecast that we have of our crumps, if we do have to have one strategic option, unpopular though it is, will we do consider what is our list in order of priority of dropping existing discretionary services in order to be able to continue to function? And that's the one thing I was surprised not to see in the Cratis document, looking at three clearly different scenarios and saying we need to have a strategy for each one of those.
I think we've got all that the executive and the senior manager come forward, but I would agree with you, I would be expecting to see that in what they're coming forward. If it doesn't, then I think we will be raising the question again.
I think, mention it now.
So there is a recommendation, we're asked to make review and make comments. I think we've had done that, and I think that the principal comment is that, you know, we're perhaps disappointed that with hindsight, the strategic elements weren't more explicit and more adventurous. And we look forward to seeing the proposals from the executive for review in due course. I think, the thing I would ask is on top of that, that there is actually a timescale plan when this is going to get through, because there's a fair amount of work to take this through in some sort of sense. And we ought to be seeing, you know, a realistic programme, not something that's said it can be done by the end of February, because it won't be done by the end of February with all that rest of budgeting that's going on. It's something that needs to be digested properly during the course of the length of financial era. So the real future direction can be discussed in depth and reviewed. So I just make the plea in the recommendation, not only to see it, but to see a programme attached for it. Is that okay?
That's very helpful, and Louise and I go back to the leader and the executive and sort of relay the debates on this, because I think they will find that input very valuable. Chairman, I'd just make one point about the Senator Stenhouse point, and I think if members of this committee have any concerns about any aspect of the policy going forward, maybe we can certainly put it on the agenda next time and perhaps still talk about it in more detail. And because, you know, I've scrutiny committee over our resources and values money, it's really important to get your input on this, and I think it's really important that the executive hear that as well. So I think if there are any concerns about a specific area, I'm happy to put it on the agenda next time round and have a look at it.
Okay. So with those added comments to the recommendations, we're happy to move on?
Yeah.
Dick, sorry?
I was just going to say, thank you for allowing me to come back, that every single organisation as it expands comes into problems, and they employ organisation and methods companies to come in and look at their departments. What I would like to see is, for instance, in planning terms, how many plans are we required to process throughout a year? How many officers do we employ? How many plans per officer is it? How long does it take to do it? So that we can look at the department as a whole and say, is this an efficient way of running a planning development? Good. I think we need details like that, Chairman.
Personally, I think that's the next stage. I think the strategic vision has to come first, because everything has to then follow, the logic should follow from that. If we're saying we are going to not do things, then we need to identify that from the start. I don't know what others think. I think the overall strategic vision is what has to predicate everything else that follows from it. Otherwise, and we do have to do that, but I think that's the next stage.
Chairman, absolutely agree, but just as a matter of information, out of the Cratis strategic report here, came, one of its fallout from that was a, we got in a, Chairman, I'm trying to think, Ransford Stewart, that's it. Ransford Stewart came in and he did a, over a period of three months, was looking at the planning services that we do, and that's reporting to Environment, ONS in full time this time, just so that members know they're welcome to come along.
Can we move on? Move on? Okay. If we had to go to genderised nine, the budget strategy working for the project, Peter, do you want to talk about?
Certainly. Thank you, Chairman. So it very nicely does follow in front of us. All right. There's been a lot said around the table the last half an hour, to be fair about this. I've just put some bullet points down here when I was listening to you. So the first one is, there is no one answer to what we're dealing with. So, you know, we've heard some different proposals about different strategies and different scenarios, there is no one answer, there is no wholesale, let's do this object. Cratis effectively are saying, you're down to your own devices, really. They haven't given us a hand to move forward, it's down to our own devices. So the third one is, there's a lot of experience around this table between the officers and the members, lots of different backgrounds, lots of different ideas about how the world should be working. So this paper really, from my point of view, the reason I put it together is to say, we absolutely do need to start looking at a three year rise in the minimum, we can't just keep looking at next year's budget. We only set next year's budget because we have to legally, for council tax purposes, we should be looking much longer. So, you know, loads of odds, totally agreeing. So that means that between us, sitting around this table, we must be able to come together through ONS working groups or subgroups, and I've put some ideas on the table, some different themes, which do dovetail into the Cratis ultimately, to say pragmatically about how we can approach identifying not these great big panacea solutions to our problems, but, you know, what's the nucleus of all these different parts of our services that we can look at? What's the more granular issues we can look at individually? And there's lots and lots of different ideas for us all together, there's lots of experience from other councils. Some councils have been in this game 10 years already compared to where we are here in Surrey, you go into the Midlands and the coastal authorities, they've been a lot more hard done by than us, so that they've been through this experience, there's lots of learning for us to do. But we need to do that learning, and we need the capacity to do that. So my report here is saying, well, let's build that capacity to do that, and look at it on a three year basis, and we do something that allows us to keep coming back to the table every three months or so, and see what progress we're making. Different people taking different parts of responsibility and moving different assets forward. I think that's, I don't know.
Anybody else? Anyone want to comment?
Quick question. Do we actually have a piece of paper or a computer spreadsheet which actually estimates how much the council would save in annual revenue costs if each of the discretionary services were stopped?
No, not explicitly. The reason for that is because the definition of discretionary is entirely down to interpretation. There is no one piece of statute existing in local authority that says discretionary is this. There is no one piece of statute existing in local authority that says discretionary is this and statutory is that. It's a question that local authorities have been grappling with for years. One of the solutions I tried to come to the table with was to think about commissioning or internal delivery. And even that isn't giving us a clear answer as to where it cuts.
That comes as a bit of news to me. I thought there was a clear distinction. But then leaving aside that, it sounds we haven't also got a document that says how much each of our services. Because I feel if you, the fact that you just cut a service doesn't mean that you'll say 100% of the cost associated with it, because of all the admin that goes, that spreads across. Have we done the exercise of working out what would happen if, in the worst scenario, we had to start cutting services?
We are not far away from an answer. So in terms of just the statutory, we can say high level, which services are statutory. But what we can't say is where there's a statutory and a discretionary level in a service, just where the proportions fall in terms of service delivery. In terms of how moving a service out of the authority would impact on the overall authority, yes, we can come up with answers for that very quickly. We would be able to put an answer to that. But again, it's in how you phrase the question. Which pieces are moving and what's the impact and lock-on effect of other areas? Say, I'm going to take out the whole of the raves and bays teams. What's the impact in the IT team? Some of it's direct, the cost of the software they use. What about the cost of the network, the cost of the IT help desk? You know, we'd have to get rid of parts of people as such in that way. I mean, we could try and scale it, but, sorry.
Chairman said, yes, I mean, so the old budget book is on the website. So we've got full visibility of the costs and as it takes.
This is where, I mean, I was going one level deeper. But that's when you've got everything there working together. If our situation is as serious as we are assuming that it is, I would be expecting we would be able to plan, as you say, more than a year, say, three or four years forward. And we would have different scenarios of what we were providing as services in order. So I assume we're going to have to continue to provide a balanced budget in each succeeding year.
The story of ours, we had in the past done bottom-up budgeting exercise. Do you remember Graham, where we actually, it's a while ago now, eight years ago, we employed a consultant to actually go out and see what our constituents' priorities actually were. Not those who shouted loudest, but actually what they were, taking a, you know, a sample on a fairly established basis. Now, maybe we're going to be suggesting people should be doing something similar again. But it does seem to me, I personally, you know, I like the terms reference, but I think it follows the work we were talking about previously to some extent. Yeah, I know this has got to go on in any case, but it's going to be guided by the overall direction of travel which we want to take, I think. And I think in the context of, once we're going to get some consensus as to what the overall direction of travel could be, I think we can be much more constructive as to how we actually deliver the constituent parts, which is what you're looking for help here. But I do think personally, the overall direction of travel has got to come first before we can actually do too much in helping, you know, the individual bits. Now, there may be bits you think you can take out of that and which we can do first, but, yeah. But that's where I would come from. Stuart?
Can we not have a five-year plan?
That's right.
Thank you, Chairman. Have a five-year plan where you can give us a spreadsheet and you can say, right, this is where we are, this is what we've got to say. This is where, this is just Stuart's dynamic talking. That's what I would do. And all businesses, private or councils, are faced with the same thing. This is what we've got to say. Our outcomes of this, we want to get our outcomes down to that. Where are we going to make that cut? What are we making? Profit and loss on and off? Can we not do just a simple document?
Yeah. So we've got that in the medium term plan. So we've got, we do three years at the moment in detail in that way. Purely because that ties in with the government funding and beyond that, we don't get any certainty at all, especially beyond the next election in terms of where the funding would cut. And this is how we know it's 2.8 million that we're looking for.
Over two years, three years?
Over three years. We know the profiling of that as well.
Is that a colour point of three years or does that go on for?
Oh, that's, in the next three years, we have to find 2.8 million. By the end of year three from now, we need to have either reduced our cost by that or increased our income or a mixture of both.
And what percentage of our turnover is that? Do you know?
Well, it's interesting what the measurement is turnover.
It's about, yeah, it's about 20% of our net budget.
Is it?
Yeah.
As the question I was asking, five, you've got about 2.8 million in total. What are your various options for actually filling it or as seen today? What will we do over those three years to be in a balanced budget in each year?
So we've got the, so we've got the action points from the immediate term structure which actually in this document I've put forward. And so there's various strands of that. Most of them are underway at the moment. So obviously the property issues that we've been discussing, funding some of the money, we're underway with the systems thinking, certainly in my own service reflex, looking at reconfiguring services that are not, it's not really driven by money.
You're getting quiet again on it, Peter.
Sorry.
You're getting quiet.
Sorry, I was talking to my, I didn't have it on. Keep that low. So the systems thinking stuff is all about efficiency. But it's not about driving cost out of the bottom. It's about actually delivering good customer service at a good value for money. That itself actually reduces costs. Effectively, systems thinking is about cutting waste out of the process. So we're not doing anything which is adding value to what we're trying to achieve from a customer's perspective. So we have some indicative ideas of how much we're looking to drive out over the next three years in terms of our cost base, as in drive the waste out of our cost base, which is just another one of those strands of what we're looking for. So this paper is about us coming together, saying, let's look to all the income ideas. Let's get this research done. Look at every opportunity we've got.
Jerry, I'll come back to you in a minute. I mean, Peter, I think what you're saying is, I mean, I think as far as members of this round this committee are concerned, we're very happy to set up a working group. Very happy to work with you. If you want to pick up some specific topics in the absence of the detailed overall strategic review, which you would like us to look at, then I think we'd be very happy to do that. But I think, you know, looking at the bigger picture, you know, we want to see the bigger picture come forward as quickly as possible. But I recognise that within that, there are some areas which can be, useful work can be done in the meantime. And I'm sure members around this team committee were very happy to cooperate with a subgroup to comment and assist in taking that forward. So I think the action is with you to put some specific topics on the table. I know you've done a whole bunch of them here, but I, you know, we're talking a bit more detail here. Members certainly know where are the detailed cost breakdown, particular area, what are your proposals and sellable? I'm very happy to look at that in a subgroup. Nick? Sorry, Jerry, I'll come back to you in a minute.
Thank you. What I'd like to see in rather supporting what Stuart just said is some what-if scenarios. What if our revenue support grant is cut in half? What happens if we don't get any new spend? What do we do to cover these various contingencies should they arise? I think there should be some kind of plan forward of how we're going to survive.
Jerry?
Well, okay, let's inject some humour. It's great to hear that the definition of discretionary is discretionary. We've got some discretion here in defining it, but I'm going to say that's, the reality is that our officers have got a horrendous job here because it's not been, well, look at the council, it's absolutely correct, but we have lost the revenue support grant. It's gone, but we didn't know we were going to. You couldn't plan ahead for that entirely. We didn't know how much it was going to hurt us until a year ago, even less. We might get some more money out of the business rate retention and the pilots and the rest, but we don't know. So how can you put together a five-year plan and even a three-year plan when you, I don't envy you your job in trying to sort this out? Because you give us some ideas of filling in holes and of course we turn around. As councillors, we have to say, well, there's a lot of risk in that. We don't, rather, we didn't do that. So, you know, I can understand that the difficulty we've got. One thing that I would like to do, and I don't know whether it's, you know, whether we can do this with other councils or not, but is lobby to government to allow reward for good H R A management. I mean, I don't see any way of, you've got a nice list of key financial plan actions to arrest the budget shortfall on page 61. But we see maximising from fees and charges and property, brilliant. Except all that does is fuel inflation for our customers, for our residents and our businesses. We're sort of doing the opposite to what we want to do to them, just make them pay. But there's a limit to what we can make them pay as well, in theory. Develop our borrowing strategy further. No, we don't want to go and get debt. So can we, you know, and this is realistic, we've got Easter here as well and we don't even know whether we're going to have it pedestrianised or not.
Specifically, comment.
Can we? Is there any possibility that we, because one thing we can do, as councillor Stenner said, is build ourselves up a bigger and bigger council housing or social housing base that we can still make a profit out of? And, you know, I think we should be able to, the old days of, I can understand why we have to have it ring-fenced for the sake of honesty, really. But, you know, if taking, so that, you know, a dodgy council doesn't just nick all the money charged all to tenants, charge it to the government for housing rent, for benefits and put all that money into their general fund. But I really think that in the situation we've got at the moment, if we are acting as a very good landlord and we're producing a lot of money out of housing revenue account, you know, why should we going forward not be able to have some benefit from that? Because that's genuine good work we're doing that we should have a benefit from, I'd have thought. Is there any way forward in that?
Yeah. And so that's not a policy matter for us. It's a statutory one. There's a statutory ring fence around the housing revenue account and we're not allowed to cross-subsidise. And it is as simple as that. We're not allowed to mix tenant money with council taxpayers' money. And we're not allowed to subsidise rents or the council tax itself. So that's an absolute and we don't get any flexibility over that at all. Now, we are building new council homes and with housing revenue account money. And that is bringing in new rent streams to the housing revenue account 30-year business plan. So the government, again, sort of very suddenly restricted our ability to increase rents. In fact, they put a minus 1% for four years. They've indicated now that they'll drop that at the end of the four-year period. But that took tens of millions of pounds out of a 30-year business plan. And so, you know, they're the conditions that we're working under and any business will experience sort of sudden setbacks. And the council did and it got its business plan realigned last year and it's working within that new plan now. So, you know, we do respond to those, those sort of setbacks that we get suddenly.
I'd go further than that. I mean, I think this council is trying to do exactly what you're talking about. When it had to mortgage its populism, how many years ago? Six years ago.
Five years.
Five years ago. We had an opportunity for the first time in many years to actually be developing council houses. And we took that opportunity and the council took the idea that it would try and maximise that. Now, Treasury had caught up with us, basically, and ended by forcing upon us a rent reduction that had actually impacted our ability to continue with the programme in its original scale. And it had to be revised. Now, and that was done last year. Now there is some signs that maybe some relief after 2020 with our revenues. And so we might be able to, at that stage, if that is secure and becomes real, you know, accelerate the programme again. But I think we're doing as much as we can. I think there are other issues on the H R A which we're looking at, but I think let's not go into that now. But I think that the intent to build as much as we can is there. So I mean, let's just in dealing with this particular aspect, agenda items. Jeanette, do you want to comment?
I'd simply ask, exactly how many houses have been built over the last five years?
Sorry?
Social homes. How many has Wavy actually built over the last five years?
Well, I don't know the actual numbers now, but a large number started, that's for sure.
Not in my head, but I can get that number around to members. Yes, yeah. There are three or four developments. Plus we've got Wake or Station Rose, we've got Oxford Runge. So a number of, so we can get those numbers and get those around to members.
Yeah. We're good to have them.
So we have completions and underwound and in the planning process as well. Is that okay?
But it's actually been quite an uphill struggle, for all of us, for many, many years, when you just did not have the funds to build council houses. And then you lose the expertise. So you have to build up, you know, a property development business from scratch in many respects.
And look, your page 61, your number six point on here on key natural transactions makes it seem quite sensible. Optimising return cash at some times of low interest rates. And that's probably best time to borrow around the ill town.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, Stuart?
Can I, just so I get it clear in my head, you're looking to save around 85,000 pounds a month for the next three years. Is that correct?
I'm assuming it's working out well. I don't think calculations, but it's a good way of putting it.
Yeah?
Yeah.
And that is your 20% of?
Well, we have an annual, a net annual revenue budget on the general fund of around about 12 million. We need to, by the end of year three, take in 2.8 million out. But that's before a council tax increase. So, you know, if members approve that, that helps. And the member briefings that Peter and I did recently, you know, we set out the main themes of addressing the shortfall. And all the things that Peter's mentioned, the efficiency, the procurement, so, you know, trying to buy stuff for less, et cetera. And all of those efforts will all come together. But what will really help as well is, as Peter's suggesting here, and Chairman, you're saying is a good idea, which is to, you know, sort of get members on board to start looking through some of the discretionary areas and how we do some of the statutory areas as well. And really start to look at how we can eat into our cost base and build income over the next three years.
I think you need to be guided by it. I mean, I think for us to go scattergun approach into that book would be a waste of time and effort. And I think you need to focus our attention and work with you on that. So anybody else want to make a comment on this particular agenda item? So with that addition to the recommendation, are we happy to move on?
One last comment. And in a sense, the document you refer to does provide a form of the information. I think when we have as many as 16 different bullet points, it's interesting to see what we think the scope of each of them is to revise either savings or increasing incomes, as they'll vary a lot. I mean, in fact, it's a reverse compliment, a genuine compliment, that optimising return on cash surplus is not our scope. This has been doing a very good job all already. So one can't see that producing millions. A few thousand possibly. I think if one then sees where the biggest potentials are in either the direction of saving costs or increasing income, we can then form a clearer view as to where essentially we should be.
But again, it has to be the context of the overall strategy.
Actually, so you've actually put them into the finance.
That's the overall picture.
That's it.
But solving the problem is the next stage.
Absolutely.
Well, that's where we have to be led by you as to which areas you want us to focus on.
We'll be back in a tick.
As part of our recommendation, we have to agree the next steps we wish to take. What are the next steps?
Next step is, I think, for officers to come back and invite us to, you know, to comment, to work with them in reviewing its specific areas in the context of an overall strategy again.
It's a bit nebulous, Chairman.
Sorry?
It's a bit nebulous.
Well, I don't think we can. I mean, that budget book, I mean, if you want to pick up, you know, if you want to suggest an item in the budget book, please do. But I mean, there are so many topics in there that in the context, you know, we need to see where officers are currently doing work and where we can add value. I mean, if we're not going to add value, then we're wasting our time. So I would suggest we actually invite Peter to come forward with some specifics which we can look at.
Chairman, this is helpful. I think the finance seminar gave a very valuable guide to the whole of the council, the members, the seven people. I think if this committee wants to prove it's actually doing something useful, I think it can ask to be taken one level of detail further down, take out some more work. That's part of our contribution to trying to move forward on this very difficult budget shortfall over the next three or four years.
Okay. Well?
So can I just check one thing, Chairman? Do you want this done as a full committee or a subgroup like you're doing on some other areas?
Personally, I think it'd be more productive in the subgroup. That work for members then. I mean, it's, we're a lot round this table, we'll actually make more progress. But then some groups clearly going to report back, but that's another issue.
Chairman, can I specifically ask that in the information that we're given, there's a great concern I have that we are receiving from other areas of the economy, we are being managed to pay for health. We've never really done health. We've done.
Let's focus on the.
But, you know, can we, when you're looking at discretionary areas and areas that we might be able to save money on, can we particularly look at and bundle them together, all the different areas of health that we're looking at? Because it's got to be a concern that we are going to otherwise get dumped with everything the NHS and Surrey County Council don't, can't afford to do anymore.
I think that's a separate issue. I think that we're, let's just stick with the path we've got at the moment. Because, you know, I think we've talked about agreeing an overall strategy. We talked about particular areas which officers want to us to work on now. Let's work with them. At the end of the day, then health issues are going to come up. But I don't think it immediately in terms of this working group. in terms of this working group, we're going to get there, this working group will be all over the place, and we're actually trying to take up all health issues at this point in time. In due course, we may have to, but not at this point in time, I would suggest.
I think the themes will fall out of detail.
That's right.
Yeah, so.
It may well come up.
Right. Let's, we're conscious of time, it's already, we've worked in at it an hour and a half. So if we can move on with those added comments to the recommendations, if we can move on now back to agenda item seven, David, do you want to, I think you're very patient with me.
I'm fully alert. So, yeah, customer services, and this has been Foresight Workstream for some time now, and we did report back in last November to another overview and scrutiny committee, or pre-decessive this overview and scrutiny committee, the kind of lines of inquiry that the Foresight Group were proposing to explore. And overview and scrutiny at that time were supportive of that, and we duly reported to executive. And since that time, Foresight Group have been working kind of through these themes and talk with proposals. And those proposals were put forward for debate at post-management board earlier on this year, starting in around kind of May time, and they did attract a lot of attention and debate, when post-headed service began to kind of see the potential indications for their services. And during this kind of debate, we had a change of managing director also, so we got some new steer coming in at that point. And management board are proposing to executive, subject to the views of the overview scrutiny committee, the kind of, the full kind of items that form the body of the report. And so one of the primary things we're proposing to do, we have got a business case already agreed at officer level on this, is around channel shift, where we're seeking to give residents the option of automated services. And we're starting off that pilot exercise in housing, and working with our colleagues in housing to find exactly which functions can translate into a kind of automated environment. And this is, of course, for everything that's automated, there is a saving attached to that. It's a bit like, in, it's times gone by, when you used to go to the post office with your O T and your proof of insurance, et cetera, now that's kind of fully automated process, presumably the post office now leave less people on their counters because they haven't got that stream of work anymore. Well, that kind of translates for some of the things that we do as well. And every time we kind of automate something where somebody, at the moment we're offering this as an option, it's, all the other access routes are still be available. But the idea is that we will reduce footfall and telephone traffic because more and more stuff is getting automated, and it's important to tie it up to the back office systems, so we have kind of limited human intervention in some of these transactional functions that kind of lend itself to channel shift, as we call it. So that pilot's kind of underway. An important element of it is the metrics and proving the fact that we've reduced the need for posts, really, I mean, phone calls will reduce from X thousand to X thousand, there'll be a number of calls less coming into the organisation, so we need to be able to identify those and commit to the cashable savings the business case is predicated on. So that kind of works, it started now, but it's in its early stages. And linked to that stream of work is the customer service pilot exercise also, which is also starting in housing. Because at the moment, we've got around twelve call groups, if you like, mini call centres, whatever you want to call them, where we've kind of got groups of staff who work for a particular, work in a particular service area, and kind of act as the service centre, whether it be parks or revenues or housing repairs or whatever it might be. Now, as we kind of go through channel shift and reduce them as a call, as a in, some of these service areas may lose critical mass, and we may be looking at kind of some amalgamation going forward. But we need the metrics to be able to prove that, and at the moment, those metrics need work, so we can absolutely become certain as to how many people are calling in, what they're calling in about, how long it takes to deal with it, and if there are other options for some of those inquiries that are coming in. The third element to this is some improved technology for the managers of these various kind of call groups. That helps not only the customer experience, because it kind of involves being able to kind of monitor live calls, but also tracking numbers of calls that are coming in, waiting times, abandonment rates, et cetera. It has to follow on from channel shift, really, because the channel shift will require us at some point to have a customer information system as part of it, and it can't, we don't want to end up with two different customer information systems coming out, so the customer services, the phone kind of system needs to, it'll need to fit in with whatever we have on channel shift, because channel shift is the prime driver of savings in this area, we anticipate. And the fourth screen that we need to look at, which we can do concurrently with most of this, is look at our kind of policies, our customer service strategy, all the kind of infrastructure bits that haven't been revised and reviewed for some time now. We're proposing to start that process off by looking at our existing service standards, see if they capture the things that are of importance to residents, and that in itself will inform what we do in terms of the strategy and whole system.
Thank you. Comments, everybody?
Thank you, Joe. Every time that I ring through to Waverley, I get to the main switchboard, and I then have to explain I wish to talk to Housing Department or Planning, and then there's a delay while they put me through. Most firms have this business where you ring up their main number, and they have, if you wish to speak to Housing, press one, if you wish to speak to Planning, press two. I can't see why we can't have that automatic system, so that any caller goes straight through to the department they want to speak to, instead of spending additional wasting time talking to a main switchboard.
Well, it's an option. One of the things we've got to contend with is the fact that at the moment, there are lots of little service areas. So if we did it tomorrow, you'd be pressing one for parks and twelve for benefits, it'd be quite a long. But if we, if we kind of coalesce some of these areas, then that becomes easier. So it's definitely on the agenda.
I think, chairman, there's a hundred and ten different services from Waverley, but it's not impossible at all, because lots of, as you say, council, lots of organisations are cracked, it's just getting to the point where we can get the majority of our customers through, because we have four or five areas that probably take eighty percent of the incoming calls. And so, you know, we're working on that, so it's not impossible, but we do the wide range of things within this organisation building, so.
It's definitely just within the group.
Stephen?
Thank you. Yes, I mean, my golf club has seven, and you can feel yourself losing the will to live. Once you know what they are, you don't want to press it, you're new to it. It's a pretty good limit. Anyway, my question was on channel shift, I fully understand why it's important. The upfront P B, including, say, a two year project life is about eighty thousand, I would say, from the numbers you quoted. And what sort of annual savings are ballpark figures, I appreciate you can't, but order magnitude, you're talking about saving ten or twenty thousand a year, or a lot less?
That's a good figure, that, Graham.
Good figure.
In the business case, we put a conservative estimate of between seventy five and one hundred and twenty five thousand.
So what, sorry, the P B or upfront or the?
That'll be the total saving at the end of the entire channel shift programme.
The annual saving.
The annual saving.
The annual saving?
Between seventy five and one hundred and twenty five, once we've rolled it out right across the organisation.
Well, that's a massive, very short payback picture, which is.
Well, we have to get it all rolled out, which will take at least eighteen months, and then once those metrics approved, or that we'll have to commit to them.
Chairman, it fits with the three year time horizon we're talking about, and it's, so, you know, we're hoping that three.
And that's really basically being able to dispense with what, round about four posts?
Yeah, which we split, spread, conservative, if you think.
Add some systems costs as well.
Hang on, we're starting in housing, which we think will probably be less taken in housing in other areas, but housing are more geared up for doing it in other areas, which is why we're starting that.
Okay. Anybody else want to comment?
I think you're heading in the right direction, and particularly, I see the, under channel shift and the, we're going to, taking away the generic email addresses and putting forms in so that we can guide and get the information we want, and the information's a lot more meaningful than if you're just letting people run. But we've got to be careful that, obviously, there's a box for that person, because there's nothing more annoying than a survey that doesn't actually, it doesn't apply to you, but they're asking you to answer the question.
Hundred and thirty generic email addresses online.
My other concern is looking at the demographics of Waverley as a borough, I mean, we've got an aging population. I mean, how many are really going to benefit from web based services, which I understand is a significant part of your drift here? I mean, my concern is our ability to communicate with those people who are not I T literate in any sense or form, it, to my mind, is the challenge in communication.
Yeah, we won't be everybody, but we have got a highly educated demographic in Waverley. I think lots of people will choose to do things online.
I'm sure they will, but what are we going to do about that group?
Significant group, I would suggest.
We're not taking anything away.
Time will certainly provide a cure, in due course.
Yeah.
That will take. Is it? You're being webbed. That will be. Perhaps longer than you three years. The trend has to be that more and more people, I mean, I'm a social media dinosaur, but my children are regarding it as.
No, I know that, but, I mean, we have an aging population in Waverley, and we need to be conscious of the demographics, is all I'm suggesting, is, because it, certainly on looking at some of the council tenants on, in my ward, many of them just wouldn't be capable of processing either emails or alone, working off a web programme.
This is an additional facility rather than taking it away.
Well, I mean, we mustn't lose sight of, I think we do have a communication problem with some of our more elderly people. Jeanette?
I'm sorry, it just, you should be looking at it as an additional problem, because there are an awful lot of people, parents, our parents, for instance, who wouldn't even have a computer in the house, who would have to rely on other people to come and help them, or grandchildren, or children who may have a computer, if they have time to do it for them, it doesn't always work. We have constituents who've been trying to get on the housing list, got on the housing list, didn't know how to bid for a house, took them six months to get themselves a loan, they don't have a computer of their own.
No, but this proposal will not take in any of the existing access routes away.
So an example in housing, actually, would be lots of people phone up and ask for the balance on their rent account, for example. So, you know, we introduce online access to their rent account. Now, you don't stop the ability for someone to phone up and ask, but a number of people, and we're expecting it to be a large number of people, just in this one example, would take up that opportunity, because you can do it out of hours, you can do it at the weekend, but lots of people wouldn't or couldn't, and that's fine, because they'll still be able to access. But actually, you know, overall of our services, you start to reduce a lot of the admin around them, and we do know from the group that David runs, the Foresight Group's made up of all of our high number of, our high volume customer interaction services representatives of. And we know lots of people phone up that would otherwise have done something else, and so, and we're talking in the thousands, so you start to take all of those out of the equation, offer a better service for those people, you don't reduce the service for other people, and you can take people and resources out of the organisation most of harmlessly, and that's the plan.
Well, I always, I am always suggesting is don't lose sight of that element, which will be, will feel unable to take advantage of this new service.
No, I agree.
I suspect many of them will survive on the free. Okay, anybody else want to comment on this particular item? For those comments, I don't, anything we want to add to the recommendation? Okay. Moving on. What should we do? Peter, do you want to introduce it?
Chairman, I think we've pretty much covered this.
Well, I think so, too, and I think this is sort of, we're not much more to add here, we just accept this for information, and move on then to the committee work programme. Alex, do you want to take us?
Members will.
Spain, you're mine, it's already called in, aren't I?
Oh, oops, any more than that, can you sense this? Members will see the work programme laid out, and it's slightly changed to how the last one was presented, so what we've tried to do this time around is, when you look at the forward programme, you will see the date for consideration being January, so you can have a look at what items are on the executive forward programme, that scrutiny you might want to consider. And these dates, again, they're fluid, so they're open to suggestion today or any time in between now and the agenda planning meeting. I've had a few items come up for suggestion this evening, one being universal credit being a standing item onto the agenda, and I would welcome members to put any of the items forward for January.
Comments, anybody? My comment is, as you know, is probably the dates are somewhat optimistic, I mean, I think particularly are some groups working with officers will check, I should have to do a sensible job, will take a bit longer than January to get through their work programmes, and I think we ought to be realistic about time scale, is it? It's all very well doing a status report at that time, and I think that should happen, but I think the objective should be to get to the end of the task properly, not to rush it unnecessarily, to get value out of it, I don't know what other members think, that should be the approach.
Chairman, I suggest maybe a programme of, for the subgroups.
Well, I think that's the important thing, as we see the work programme, as we see the work content, it's easier then to identify a work programme, and I think that should be one of the actions we should be taking forward, is to next time, hopefully, all the subgroups will have met at least once, and at that point, we should be able to define more sensibly a work programme. Okay, with that, anybody, so, Joe, you want to comment?
Just a little bit of catch up, actually, because I'm not entirely sure, now, we've got here on capital expenditure process and management scrutiny.
What page are you talking about?
We're at the bottom of section A, but actually, you don't need to really read that, because you're, I understand that you have a subgroup, a subcommittee at the moment, which is looking into the capital projects, or capital expenditure in some form, and the councillor Williamson is on that subgroup, and I know he's going to be away for a few weeks, so I'm just wondering whether you want to take, put a different person instead of him on to your thing, and I'm not suggesting myself, I'm just wondering whether you need to.
Well, at this stage, I think, you know, that subgroup is bound to meet later this week, so I think, for example, I don't think how much more we can add to it at the moment. I think.
I wonder whether another member of the committee, your committee wanted to replace, because I'm unlikely to be able to, I don't know when it is, and I'm unlikely to be able to replace its data.
No, I think we'll leave that as it is for the time being. Okay, with nobody, any other comments, we'll say that's noted, and then we'll rapidly move on to agenda item level, I don't think they need to screw the question public, but that takes a break, thank you very much for your contributions.